It's nine o'clock. I'm gonna call the me the Cottington County Commission to order if you please rise. We're gonna have the pledge of allegiance led by Myron.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, what would you say? One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two, if there's a need for a public comment, you can do it in person here, or there's two telephone numbers, six oh five eight eight two six two four eight, or six oh five eight eight two six.
Can't live without the zoom.
Oh, your office is being.
What's that? Yeah.
Is the VA.
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Friday.
Uh, you're good.
I, I don't know. I think they are.
Good. Last time I asked, the holiday was on Thursday.
It works good.
I forget what the holiday was, but they were open on Friday.
Yep. They don't necessarily.
Are we goodly?
I use.
Okay, okay, Todd, go ahead.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Um, we'll start off right with, right out, right away with the, the metrics there. We got one hundred and eighty-two open claims, seventy-eight pending action at the VA, one hundred and seventeen completed year to date. Currently eleven open in Hamlin and one pending, uh, action with the VA and one completed year to date. Currently working with nineteen other veterans outside of our county and sixteen, uh, claims previously completed for people outside of our county. Seven thousand seven hundred and forty-three for the month of June. That's the increased on monthly compensation. Year to date, that's seventy thousand five hundred dollars is where we're at with that. Seventy-six thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars for the month of June is the retro payment. Again, bringing the, the claims that we had filed before up to current payment date. Year-to-date retro payments is, uh, five hundred and forty-six thousand and some change. Uh, three veteran transported, uh, in June, two currently scheduled in July. Uh, we currently have seven drivers and one application recently submitted. Uh, Fourth of July parade, um, it's gonna be again led off by the veterans organizations. We'll be meeting tonight with the commanders to discuss that. They pretty much got it all laid out from that standpoint. Uh, status quo is the last couple of years as far as that. Uh, beyond, um, KWATs at seven thirty on the eleventh, they pushed it back since of the Fourth of July, so we pushed it back a week. And then KX, uh, LG, I got that right, at oh nine oh five on the eleventh. Other than that, you know, I meet with the commanders tonight. Um, we completed our office appraisals and the salary increase. Um, that BTS transportation that's gonna be coming into the VA. Um, I haven't heard supposedly, again, they, they have somebody hired there, but I haven't heard anything else on that. Um, I'm gonna try to get down to Hamlin, uh, to one of the commission meetings there. Just to say hello and who I am and whatnot from that standpoint. Uh, Jay and I will go down there for that. Uh, three through five September, we have the state VSO conference and training in Sioux Falls. That's kind of where we're at right now. Are we gonna talk budget? You want me to go?
Up to Randy, you wanna go ahead and go Randy because budget before we move on to the next week.
Yeah, come down.
So, basically, when you, when you look at our, on the, on the budget there, um, we do have the.
It's in your books, guys.
Oh, yep, yep.
All the rules.
All the world to see. So a couple, I mean, for the most part, everything is, the, those first few lines is status quo there as far as, again, remember when I briefed last year that I had to have a little catch-up because I didn't figure in the proper percentages? In twenty twenty-four, so you'll see a little bit bigger jump there for the, um, wages, so that, but that should be on track now. I should, got that, got that good there. Um. But you go down there, the next one, you'll see the difference there is when you look at the employer health. Uh, both Jay and I do not take any employer health, so that zeroed out the twenty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-two. In twenty twenty-five, we also do not take any dental insurance, so that zeros that out, so you'll see, um, a, a net gain to the county there, I guess, on that standpoint. Uh, that's why you see that one seventy is seven thousand dollars less than the previous year. Uh, if you go down there, you'll see that the veteran service rentals on four twenty-four, um, the sixteen thousand five hundred, um, which was not put into the twenty twenty-four funds. It will be put into our, um, request for twenty twenty-five, so that's an increase there. Um, also with the four twenty-eight, the veteran service utilities, you'll see an increase there. Uh, again, of course, that's for our utilities over there in the, in the rental building there. Overall, uh, one thing that I, I, I noted here on this, but I don't know if it's ever noted there, that the source of revenue that we might have from Hamlin.
Yeah, we'll go back into the general, I believe, but it can't go just back into your.
Okay.
But it goes back into the general.
It goes back into the general. That should be that thirteen thousand, then the state reimbursement that we get from the Department of Veterans Affairs, that goes back in the general fund there also, so, um. I guess the, the, the biggest increase there is basically on the salary and the, uh, the service, the rentals and the utilities, but again, any questions on that?
No, and what I want to do is build in a revenue just for your, um, contracts with other counties, so then we can kind of track that.
Okay.
Just way to track it.
To like a separate revenue.
Things in the general, but it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you gave me that revenue line of the three, four, four point one two.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Sounds good. Questions? Okay, have a great day.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Todd.
Hey, Dodi, you want him coming up?
Morning.
Morning, Dodi.
All right, so finally back in person now. Um, we had our shake wagon this, in June, it was a great success. Um, thank to everyone who came to purchase a shake and to all the volunteers, all of our youth love to work the shake wagon. Um, forty-four youth attended our Progressive Ag Safety Day on June eighteenth, and thank you to our speakers and sponsors. We couldn't do it with all those volunteers who've come to speak and give their expertise on their safety issues. Um, fifty-three youth participated in our kid care babysitting clinic on June twenty-fifth, and thank you to our speakers also that come and share their knowledge with our youth. From first aid to taking care of babies with an OB nurse and nine-one-one and fire department all there too, so, um, July is a busy month, and we have horse show. We had our horse show here in Clark yesterday, but the state horse show is next week. That'll be going on Monday. And then we have our special foods contest this month. Uh, Cloverbud camp will be held on July seventeenth with our young five to seven-year-olds, and then I'll be at Camp Chance twice this month, um, to speak on nutrition. And then our Cottington County Achievement Days are July twenty-ninth to August first, and we'll get you a schedule shortly here. And something new this year, we had some kids compete, not just in four-H competition, but in some Daisy competition for BB gun, and so they, we have five youth competing at the Daisy Nationals from Cottington County right now in Rogers, Arkansas. Um, six that qualify, one could not go, but, um, five of them are there. And they did a lot of their own fundraising for that because it wasn't really a four-H event, it's a Daisy national event, so thanks, they had lots of great sponsors and fundraising going on for that, so. So it's first time for Cottington County that we've sent someone to Daisy Nationals, so I can't wait to see how they do, and they did a lot of practicing, so, and then and then the budget we have too, so, yeah, okay, if you want to talk with that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Becky has that, so.
Okay. Um, really not a lot of changes in it. Uh, we'll start at the top, the wages, of course, we, um, added some cost of living increases, um, health and dental insurance. I think we did the standard ten percent across the board on that for potential increases. Um, the only other, well, you'll see down in, in, uh, the four-H advisor, there's also cost of living wage increase, that's SCSU's request as well. Um, the only other change you'll see in there is our utilities. We had re, uh, we had to renegotiate our mid-continent contract that came up for renewal. And at the time that this budget was done, the estimate was one fifty-seven fifty-three, and that is the actual cost now. It's no longer the estimate, so. Um, but everything else, there was no adjustment. It's pretty much, pretty much the same, so I don't know if you have any questions. There's really no major changes in it.
Mr. Chair. So where did you see the advisor?
Uh, four twenty-nine, the bottom one, the four-H advisor, mhm.
All right, okay.
Yep, did you find it?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, way at the bottom. Yep, last one.
Really, the only increase is our personnel costs.
Insurance and, and wages, yeah, everything else is, we, we pretty much stay within our budget. We're pretty, we're preferable, I think.
Easy.
We are, aren't we, I think? So any questions, concerns, anything at all on the budget? Okay.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay. Um. Number seven. There's no, that's the only ones, okay. Um, number eight, uh, discussion, possible action to approve ballot language or bond referendum to fund detention center construction.
That's mine, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, as chairman for County Justice Advisory Committee, um, so the Commissioner Van Duzen is vice chair, so where the two commissioners shared sits on. Uh, as well as, um, and several non-voting members, but then we have four other members from the community that are voting, so seven voting members. And, uh, so recommendation was that we use this ballot language as we go forward to, uh, and this will be for the revenue ballot, um, to see if we can build a jail for, because we know needed. And if we can go through, I can go through some of the stuff that we talked about, if it's of interest to people, some of the stuff we talked about, the advisory committee, um, but essentially what this option is about, so you can see. Show this on the screen, spell like, let's, let's see what we're talking about here. So people can just see what we're talking, so, uh, the, uh, what this, so we talked about several different options, um, when George Gill-Garnos' report, so he's the jail consultant we hired. He said, look at predicting out to twenty years or so, looking at an average daily population of about ninety inmates, okay, so that's, and again, you know, it's based upon snapshots of time, he's a good, he's probably the best analyst of this kind of thing in the Midwest. And when you apply certain factors for peaking, so sometimes you're gonna have more than that, you know, more than your average, sometimes you're gonna have lower, sometimes you need to classify inmates in different ways, so there's, there's a couple of factors that you, that you apply, but that equates to, um, I wanna say twenty-three percent added, so then he recommends a bed count of a hundred and thirteen beds in a, in a future jail. So, um, but then we had a couple other discussions, just the way that kind of blocks out, working with the architect, you kind of were stuck between like a hundred eight beds and a hundred twenty-eight beds. So picking between the two, um, with this option, this amount of money, um, I can show you how that would, that would work. Okay, I don't, I mean, you can look at the slides, this might become able to just, we, we looked at several different options based on a one hundred eight beds and then showing out another twenty beds if you ever need to make it cheaper for the county later, you know, and sometime in the future, if you do need more than those hundred eight beds, if that, you know, if the average daily population turns out to be greater than ninety inmates, um, so we want to give ourselves some, there's a risk there by building a smaller, a smaller jail than a hundred twenty-eight beds, maybe a little bit smaller than what, um, the hundred thirteen beds Mr. Garnos recommends. So a couple of ways we were gonna look at mitigating that was, number one, to build shell space, so just basically walls, and so that would make it a lot cheaper if you need to add additional beds in the future, that's one way. And then the other thing that's kind of using some new practices, uh, recommended by the architect, that will also save some money in the build, um, is to go from a two-bed to a four-bed jail, and so there's less hardware, so, you know, you don't have these large dorm spaces that are hard to manage that, you know, is in our current jail, so dorm space is kind of like, if you think of like an open bay barracks kind of, kind of thing, you know, so it's, so if you have it's very hard to, um, classify inmates of different types, you know, particularly security risks, when you got those large spaces to deal with, so what you have kind of a compromise between the, just the dorm space and two-bed jails for the four-bed jail, or four-bed cell, and so that's, those are some ways where you mitigate that, that risk. So looking, looking across the way here, we, uh, based upon just looking at, uh, a hundred eighth bed jail, um, we would also want to build a sheriff's space at some point, so, uh, the committee settled on the last recommendation in this column, so it basically, the overall cost would be thirty-seven million two hundred thirty-eight. This is, and these are estimates based on, you know, good data, good current data about what it's like, you know, what it costs to build jails, so thirty-seven million, twenty-three-eight thousand dollars and some change. To build a jail with, with hundred eight beds, twenty-bed shell space, and then, uh, uh, a Sheldon Sheriff's Office, which we would, you definitely want to get that Sheriff's Office located, co-located with the jail eventually. So that would save some, that would save some money in the initial build, and then we can, you know, the Sheriff's Office is just office space, a much simpler construction project, you know, internally, and we could, we could budget for that. So that's, that's basically the option we settled on, okay, and that's then applying. Click through this here, so then applying some of the, the, uh, the funds that we have saved, so currently in, in the Future Building Projects Fund, we have eight million six hundred thousand six hundred nineteen dollars, okay? So we're, the committee suggesting that we apply that to that thirty-seven million dollar figure to get a bond amount of, you know, the, the minimum bond amount would be just over, a little over twenty-eight million, not a little over, but say twenty-eight million six hundred and thirty-seven thousand and some change. Um, we're suggesting as additional contingency, make the bond amount, um, what you see on your, on your sheet there, which is, um, the twenty-nine million six hundred and fifty thousand. So, and then advertise for twenty years, so twenty-year bonding term. Um, we did talk about, uh, whether or not we'd want to do thirty years, twenty years versus thirty years, but the, the cost and interest starts, as you can imagine, pretty significant, you know, just like when you take your, your home mortgage from the thirty to the fifteen year. You save a lot of money in interest, while you're talking these numbers, you're gonna save taxpayers a lot of money by going from, you know, sticking to the twenty as opposed to the thirty. Of course, what that means is that the levy would be a bit higher, so, um, year to year, so that's, that's basically, I think I summarized the discussion, Commissioner Van Duzen, if you were there.
Yep.
Share some of them, I don't know if you wanna, maybe you just wanna add anything to what I summarized. Um, there, there was, I think, a little bit of discussion about, we've, we've kind of looked at our reserve, so how much, there's a question about how much of that, that, that money that we've saved, that eight point six million that we've saved over the years, um, for, it's called the Future Building Projects Fund, and that's, we, we have to put money in something, if it is money, money for something by law, because we can only have a certain amount of, um, unprogrammed reserves uh, in our, in our reserves, so in order to do that, we started saving for a major, major infrastructure project. Well, this is one of those major infrastructure projects, obviously have to do, so that's what, um, I'm suggesting, here's a, I, I think I just a quick, you know, to kind of explain the, the reserve funds, you know, so the issue that I think, you know, we shall be concerned about is how much of that, that building fund can we apply? And so after looking at it myself, I think it's pretty safe, applying things, applying that whole amount. And so you can see the current, the current status of the funds right now, so as of last week, um, and I realized, you know, we're spending the budget, so, you know, every year we take reserve funds from our current year, and we apply it to next year's budget because we taxing the rears, you know, we have to, um, we have to and we map out the revenues, expected revenues, we have to add to that in order to, to balance the budget, but then consistently we don't spend any of that unless we have a designated project. So just, everybody, like, does that make sense? So if we look at this standup here right now, you have these amounts applied in our reserve funds, now the top one is applied, we're spending up that one for the HVAC projects and the various other, the part in line, the various projects, and you can see that the table on the upper left is how much of those projects we're gonna have to spend this year. I mean, if, if we're able to spend it all this year, is that three point six million, okay, so that's gonna bring that, that reserve, that applied fund down, that's still gonna leave us with four point two million in reserves. We still have unassigned six point seven million, and so, um, you know, but looking at those numbers, it seems to me that, you know, if, if we don't, we've, we've taxed people for this money. Um, there's an expectation that we're gonna use it for something useful, so bread and butter issue is the jail for a county, um, you know, the law tells us that's county's responsibility. As we weigh, as we set on these dollars, they grow less and less valuable, so that's because of inflation, so eight point six million dollars is not gonna buy today, it's gonna buy a lot more than it's gonna buy years from now, so, um, that's, that's, that's the recommendation of the of the county, of the, uh, Justice Advisory Committee, so, uh, I've made a motion that we approve this ballot language.
Motion by Gable, second. Second by Van Duzen to, uh, approve this ballot language, um, further discussion?
Yeah, I do. Um, I'm not in favor of it. I don't feel that this is a need. I feel it's a want. I feel it's a want that we've been, that's been pushed for the last sixteen years. Uh, we have been told many times by many people how important this is and how safety this is, and how we're gonna have more numbers, and what we've, our jail is gonna be expanded. Uh, I'm wondering, and I didn't hear one word about what other counties are doing, if we don't have room, send them off to somebody else. Brookings is cheaper than we can do it ourselves. Why wouldn't we buy something on sale? We've, uh.
Were you at the, were you at the CCJAC meeting when we had that discussion?
I did not go.
The last one?
Sessions, no, I did not, but.
Some of that was discussed at that meeting.
You know, it, to me, it only makes sense. Um, I brought my tax forms in for the year, and I'm not complaining to, to share them, but my, at the rate that was mentioned, uh, over the course of twenty years, my taxes will go up fourteen thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. That's not including annual increases. That's how much I would have to kick in for the jail. Uh, I am not a rich person. I am on, will be on fixed income. I think of all the fixed incomes, I don't think people are even looking at it. I don't think the committee looked at that. I don't think they really care about that. I think they just want the new jail. And I don't, I really don't think it's a, a need. I think it's a want.
I see now.
I mean, of course, you're gonna have.
On up sheriff. Yeah. Come up, uh, Sheriff Howell.
There's difference between needs and wants, like, see, we've studied this for long before my tenure.
Yep.
In the sheriff's office here. The data supports a new facility, um. Some of the reasons our numbers have gone down over the last seven, eight years since the last vote is because of all the programs that we've looked at, we've tried JDAI, twenty-four seven, working with the courts, drug court, vet courts, momentum court, hope courts, a whole bunch of different things that we're working on to try to reduce our population to maximize efficiency of the facility we have.
And they have worked well. They have, they have.
They have done great things.
We still have concerns with safety of staff.
Mm-hmm.
Because we have a fifty-year-old building. Any business, um, law enforcement, there's new tools, there's new things that come out, and it's not just because it's new, they're more safe, they're more effective.
Sure.
So when we look at a newer, modern facility, it's safer for staff and also safer for our inmates, which helps risk mitigate a little bit.
Excuse me, please, sure. Okay, Brookings built a new jail. How much has their safety hazards gone down?
It has gone down just because it's easier and safer for inmate movement. I don't know how you put a number on that.
But no, no, seriously, I mean, you can study facts from wherever, but Brookings built a new jail. You would expect if they had an unsafe deal with the old jail, that those safety numbers should go down, those incidents should be going down. You would expect if they had an unsafe deal with the old jail, that those safety numbers should go down. Those incidents should be going down. Are they going down for Brookings?
I haven't, I don't have those numbers, but I would say yes, because of the modern facility, I would say that they are probably going down.
So, just to uh.
So to continue on with that, over fifty years, our correctional officers are using the same tool they used fifty years ago. The building is their tool to build and manage behaviors and manage people, right?
Yep.
So within fifty years, a lot has changed in technology and we've tried our best to kind of keep up with that with cameras. Trying to keep our facility safe, again, for inmates and for staff, because we have had deaths in our facility. And that's something that we're trying to avoid. We don't want to get the county sued with a big lawsuit. We don't want our staff, which is our most valuable asset, to get harmed. Um, there's a lot of assaults and issues with our staff getting hurt. Um, with a modern facility, we don't have to move inmates as much. You can help detect behavior issues. If Troy and I are having some behavior issues together. We can detect that right instantly, because they're right on the other side of the glass. It's hard to do that on a little camera. And if you've been in our facility, I know we've given tours, and that's something that we'll do, continue to do. As you'll see, there are big steel doors, little flaps, it's hard to see. It's hard to manage inmate behavior when we have these type of facility that we have.
So if I can just give you back something else, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Uh, Commissioner Waterman's, uh, the concerns about the cost, and we're all concerned about it, obviously. So. As we're seeing, you know, the longer we wait, the longer we kick the can down the road, the more it's gonna cost. So. We, we don't want to see those tax bills get even worse. So the longer we wait, that's what's gonna happen. This is just gonna cost more, because. We, we, we recognize the need, we, you know, we documented the need um very clearly. I mean, it's all, it's been very transparent. It's all on our website. It's like to go take a look at. Um. So I, I don't think, you know, I don't think that's a question. So if you were, if you're talking about trying to be efficient, you know, sometimes you have to spend money to save money. This situation, we, we, we've saved this money for this purpose. Let's go ahead and do it. This is a bread and butter issue. It's about, you know, as uh. Sheriff Hall referred to, I mean, one, one, one component of the law enforcement world that we often forget about are jailers, but that's staff. The law enforcement. So we need to support our law enforcement. We need to support the bread and butter issue of supporting the justice system. That's what counties do. We build courthouses, we build jails. We have sheriffs. Um, we, we, you know, we pay juries, all that kind of stuff. This is part of the, the bread and butter. Does unfortunately, it's one of the more expensive things we have to do. Unfortunately, unlike a, unlike a city, we don't have an identified state gym revenue. We don't have that second penny sales tax to build, to do infrastructure projects. We have to ask the voters for. So this is why we have to poop out.
You know, and I would, I would venture to guess that if you went to any one of the counties that have recently built a new jail, you would have, be having the same discussion about whether or not. They thought it was a need versus a want. And um, you know, nobody likes to spend money. To build jails. That's just the reality of the situation. I mean, hopefully I'll never be in it, hopefully I'll never have to use it, but. It's something I'm gonna have to pay for if I'm gonna live here in the community. It's part of what we do. It's unfortunate. Now. I guess the question I would have is Commissioner Gable, do you remember what the bond amount was in twenty seventeen when this was initially?
It was just under uh nineteen, it was eighteen million.
Eight point eight.
Yeah, it was just under nineteen million dollars.
And now it's at twenty nine million.
So we're looking at, you know, a bit smaller jail. And oh, by the way, this concept also talks about where we build it. So. Uh, and that one, we would have to even buy that in, in twenty seventeen, we would have had to. Several, several hundred thousand to purchase land. This, this particular option, we're not even purchasing land. We're talking about land where the county. You know, that the county already owns. So um, you know, that gives you an idea of the inflation in construction costs. And so, you know, the longer we wait. You know, we're, we're seeing it.
And the one thing that we're actually asking for today is actually just to put it on. The vote for November, so people can still decide. They have their own opinion on a big, big side.
It's still go to a public.
It'll still go to a public vote.
This is just the ballot language.
Uh, Commissioner Johnson?
I, I've got a couple of things that uh I have a little heartburn about. Uh, number one, uh, I really. Uh, I'm hesitant about approving this for two reasons. One, I don't see anything. I mean, I'd like to see a outline or a. Uh, a graph of, of, what, what's gonna, you understand what I mean?
Yeah.
I know there's a, we're talking about this shell space and, and that's not a bad idea, but I'd like to see the layout, you know? Um, no offense, but that, when I, and I've been to these meetings, but it looks to me like there's. A lot of extra space in the sheriff's department. Yeah, I understand.
We'll actually.
It looks like there's a lot of, a lot of room there.
That's a shared space for jail training and for, for both. So that is something that we've gone through and we've cut down. To the bare minimum of what the needs would be for that facility.
And I, I like, like that term needs. Okay. The other thing is, is that uh Commissioner. Gable, I think is messing with the numbers here. Not messing with the numbers, I shouldn't use that term, but jockeying the numbers around to make it look good. Really, I think if we are going to build a jail, I think we should bond for the, the cost of the jail. I mean, uh, this eight point six million dollars that um Mr. Gable wants to transfer out of the building fund, which is that's what it's there for. But would deplete that fund completely, wipe it out. I'm not in favor of that at all. Um. You know, look around you right now. Uh, let's just go down south a few miles. Um, they got roads washed out, bridges washed out. I mean, there's catastrophes down there that are, we can't predict. We don't know. But if we're sitting here with a, a zero balance in that building fund, if we had a catastrophe of some kind, um. It could come back to bite us hard. That, and we can't, I just, I'm not happy in seeing that fund go to zero. It's, it's there uh primarily because we were able to transfer money into there and not be. Hiding money, you know, from uh, we're trying to be transparent and moving that we legally could move the money, the excess money that we had into that fund. To use for building, and that's what we should use it for. But do we have to sink all eight point six million dollars into one project? Let's. Let's not do that as far as I'm concerned. Let's, let's bond higher. We can use some of that. But I know, you, you don't have to be a genius to see this twenty nine point six. It's under thirty million. That's a selling point, selling point right there. Let's get this bond under twenty nine, under thirty million dollars, so people will buy it. That, I mean. You know, that's like a, a, a sales sign is what that is. So that's my hang up on that and. And I'd like to see it reworked. I'd like to see a, a floor plan of what it's gonna look like. And I'd like to see some. Um, numbers changed on this eight point six million before I'll vote for it. And, and that's plain and simple where I'm at.
Mr. Chair, could I just, so the floor plan, you know, we, you realize we haven't paid the architects to do a floor plan yet. So. I mean, we're planning this consultant stuff, but the bottom passes, we have, that's when they would do that. Now, you saw that, I'll show you this slide. It's on the screen there to give a basic, very basic concept. And so, you know, that. This is looking at the two twelve site. This is a site that the county owns already, so we wouldn't have to pay the land. Um, so. You, you can see generally what it's gonna look like. So we're looking at three housing units, um, plus the sheriff's office. And so part of one of those housing units. Would have that, that twenty bit shell space under this concept. And that, you know, and this is just conceptual. So um. You can see the space program. It's the, in other words, the square footage is that are, um, that's online. So that's something that the sheriff and. Um, Matt, our chief corrections officer, had worked through to try to get, and if they were paring down, you know, hundreds and thousands of square feet. Working with the architect to get that square footage down, so it would cost less. Um, so, you know, that's the plan, what, you know, the. Then we, then we would have enough money to pay the architect to do a detailed book.
But that's the plan. I wanna see what, what, what we're spending this twenty nine million dollars on. You know, that, that's, that's a plan. I wanna see what we're gonna do with that.
That's basically, I mean, that's basically the, a summary of the space program. So when we say the space program, we're talking about rooms and square footages. So. That's, that's where this comes from. So, you know, you're looking at roughly in this case, um. And the one on the right, that would be roughly fifty one thousand square, square feet. So that's of mostly jail space, but some sheriff's space as well. So that's, I mean, that, I'm not sure that's what you'd be spending your money on. So hundred eights, hundred eight, so, or hundred eight beds. And then divided into one bed and four bed cells, um, shell space, shell sheriff's office. I mean, that's, that's what it is. Once, you know, we, if we, if we identify the funds, if we get a funding stream, then we can afford to pay an architect to do that detailed work. Um, the other piece of it, speaking to the, I mean, these are numbers that I'm sharing with you, these numbers, I mean, I'm not pulling any, any fast one here. You know, Commissioner Johnson, um, these are just numbers right off the funding balances that the auditor provided to me. So last week, June twenty fourth. So you can see the amount of applied funds. Now, we are spending the applied funds down right now, because that's, you know, as we are spending the budget. The building fund and the unassigned fund, those are just there. So even if we apply that fund. Even if we apply the fund that we save it for, so realize that if we don't spend that money, it's just gonna get less. You know, we tax our taxpayers for it. There's an expectation that we're gonna put that to good use. This is a good use. So if we can, if this helps us. Tax less, why not tax less? That's, that's the point.
And, and I see your point, Lee, uh, very plain, but what did we have to borrow? This last year in order to balance a budget out of this one?
That's what applied.
Is that seven million dollars, I understand, right?
That's the.
So we're seven million dollars short this coming year. If you look at, uh, well, every month we, we see the bills. Everything has just gone. You, you know, we've had, uh, um, and I made the comment to the, to the board here. I've never seen our monthly bills as high as they have been this past year. I know a lot of it is court appointed attorneys. I know a lot of it, but we can't control that. And if it was seven million dollars, we know that that's gonna go up. Where is that gonna come from? We need some kind of a, a cushion back here. We can't, we can't put the county in jeopardy, Lee. We can't shake the tree and get more money to fall out of the tree. You know, this isn't federal government, this is local government. And uh, it's tough out there, too. If you talk to the farmers out there, and that's who I represent, a lot of producers out there, and that, that sixty cents. Is that right? Sixty cents per thousand. It was not what we.
Fifty nine.
Fifty nine cents.
Something like that, but it's.
That's gonna jack a lot of the, the uh, the uh, you know, the, the. The real estate, real estate taxes on three to four dollars an acre. Doesn't sound like much, does it? But if you've got a thousand acres, a lot of money.
Well, that's, then I think you're making my argument, because if we, if we don't use that reserve, that bond amount's gonna be higher. Okay. And then, so that's gonna raise that levy. And then furthermore, we wait.
Well, you're, you're just counteracting what I'm saying with that. Trying to save it for a rainy day here.
No, I am too. And that's what, that's why I need this process. So if you, if you take a look at the screen, you can see how that works with, when we apply funds. So because we taxing arrears, so seldom will our, our revenues, our estimated revenues are never, almost never gonna meet our budget. Okay? That's true, right? Okay, so we, so we.
Never have.
So we take, we take reserve funds, we apply them to the budget. But if you look at the graph, we don't, we typically don't spend any of that unless we have an identified project. So if you look at the graph that I put on the screen there, um, in twenty seventeen, you'll see we applied some funds and we spent that. But that was because we have a project, we have the courtroom upgrade. Okay, then year to year, we, tho- those funds go back into the budget, they go back into our surplus. So, and that's what we, that's what we see. Now this time we're seeing is we have these major projects going on. That's the chief reason that we've had to apply the funds. And as, as we know, that those funds were made available by some COVID money we got, um, you know, back when COVID started. So that came, I guess it came at a good.
But, but what's wrong with increasing the, the bond?
I think because it's higher taxes.
Increase the bond and let's protect the county by. Uh, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do this, but let's give it a period of time. Let's spread it out over twenty years. So we don't, uh. You know, get hit quite so hard immediately.
Um, I, I think this is kind of, you know, we're talking kind of, kind of threading the needle here.
And I know it's gonna cost more because interest and costs, everything, we think it is. Who knows? It could go down, which would be wonderful.
We don't know the exact amount, but we can say, you know, the higher the bond amount, the higher the levy is gonna be. Is that fair?
No, the higher the, well, yeah, it is, but, but you said it right, but the higher the bond amount. The less people are gonna be excited about voting for it too.
That's true too.
And so I, this, this, when I said, you play with numbers, this twenty nine point six. I call that playing with numbers, because why don't we just call it thirty thousand, thirty million dollars?
It is less than thirty million. I mean, the fact of the matter is, you know, that amount will be lower taxes than thirty million. I mean, that's the fact.
I don't think we're gaining anything.
I, I, I've heard a lot of explanations as from the sheriff and et cetera, et cetera. Uh. How much is it gonna cost to build that sheriff's department? How much is it gonna cost to fill in that shale, uh, that shell? And is that shell price not included to keep this under thirty thousand, thirty million?
Well, obviously, we're trying to, yeah, yeah, to some extent, yeah.
So it's more palatable to the voter.
Well, but the problem is we need a jail, so we're trying to find that balance. So we're, we're.
We don't need a sheriff's office.
We do need a sheriff's office.
Okay, then why isn't included?
Okay, the plan, okay, here, here's, here's other concept for it. Okay, the, the reason the shelf space is there is, is so that we can include it. It just won't be, we're just gonna have to live with it for a few years in order to, to save a little money initially. Okay, that's the idea.
And that will become a budgeted item in the county budget.
Right. And so we have to.
To get that done.
But we're not talking, we're not talking super expensive floor space. We're talking, please don't interrupt me. So we're not talking su- super expensive floor space. They're like, like detention space. We're talking office space. So much simpler and those kinds of projects, we've been able to handle a lot of the budget. Okay? So, um. That, that's basically the idea. So trying to, trying to thread that needle, you know, we're, you know, our job as county commissioners is to identify an option. Okay, so that we think, you know, through the justice advisory committee, that's what we're trying to, trying to do. We're trying to identify an option. It's, that's. And, and at the same time, I feel like that our duty as a county, under state law, is to provide this space, to provide this kind of infrastructure. And I would go back to what something, like Commissioner Man Dusen said, that, you know, hopefully we don't actually, you know, personally use the jail, but in this sense. We all use it because this is a major factor in our public safety. Okay, this is about quality of life. So, you know, you know, unlike a city, you know, cities are able to, to spend, you know, some money, you know, there's nice parts of quality of life, pleasant, you know. Visible parts of quality of life, like the wellness centers, the ice rooms. This is part of the hidden, the hidden part of quality of life, public safety. And so. This is our bread and butter issue. We need to do that. Um, we just tried to pick kind of a financial, a fiscal approach that we thought would be. You know, probably the best way to, to handle it. So if we wanna spend more money, you know, somebody can. But uh. You know, we're, and the other thing is, you know, there, there could be opportunities of say, we hire, you know, say a municipal advisor. We can make some, we could make some money through, you know, there's no, the bond type investments that what the counties are allowed to do, you know, no risk to the principal. And so we could, we could add a million or so dollars through that. So those kinds, those kinds of things that we can do to manage that and, you know, increase those opportunities. Hopefully, you know, if things go well, we can, we can go ahead and finish up the sheriff's space during the initial project phase. But if it doesn't work, we wanna have the option to be prepared to do that in a couple of years, you know, within a reasonable amount of time. So that's, that's kind of. That's how we approach it. We're trying to approach something.
Mr. Chair, a couple more thoughts?
Oh.
First off, I. I appreciate what your, the committee have done and what you've done, Lee and Brad. Uh, I do appreciate all the work that you put into this, but what would be wrong with uh taking this back? And massaging these numbers a little bit and let's, let's not deplete this building fund at this time. Let's uh, let's rework this. Um. You know, maybe if you use half of it or less than half or something like that, just to keep my iron happy. You know, what's wrong with that? The other thing is, the one thing I, I really appreciate you looking at that out west. We've had that laying there for several years now, that eleven acres out there. Did, um, and, and I, I didn't get to every one of your meetings. Did you take into consideration the work that needs to be done on the infrastructure? You know, there's no roads, no approach, uh, you know, that all has to be done. Is that all?
I've actually reached out to the governor's office of economic, economic development, and there are grants. That could be applied for, for local infrastructure, lift, lift, lift grant, something like that. Local instruct, local infrastructure. Planning and development or something like that, um, that could help go towards the infrastructure. So the, the. Yeah, the, the roads, the.
Yeah.
Water, sewer.
And the last time we, last time we looked at it, I know, I was involved in it, uh, last go around when we, uh. Had to meet with the state people, I think Brenda was involved. Had to meet with the state people, I think Brenda was involved in that, as far as getting an approach on two twelve. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of hoops to be jumped through there, that's for darn sure. And so there's a lot of, there's a lot of work that needs to be done that doesn't show up anywhere on here. All we see is numbers.
So just answered Commissioner Johnson's question. So, yeah, site work and utilities are part of the estimate. So you can see from, from the slide there, this is a slide we used it, it, I couldn't print them all up, but this is a slide we used at the, uh, during the. Justified your committee meeting. So in this case, you're looking at roughly one point four million of site work at that particular site. So that gives you an idea. So, yeah, it's, it's in the cost.
Can I add some information just from the? Uh, funding side of this, just throw a few things out. You know, I realize it's a need, I've been part of that process, I get all that. I do wanna caution you, though, on depleting that building fund. For the simple fact, I don't know, there's four point two million that you have left over. We still, all the rest of our budget still need to come out of that, those dollars as well.
Understand, so if here's, if, if I can go through a, a bit of a spiel, if you wanna see how this.
Well, does, I may finish part of this first. With another part, I don't think that you've thought about, about depleting this eight point six million. Is the amount of interest we are getting off from those dollars in a year. Right now, we're at five point one six percent. Our estimated. Decline in interest would be four hundred forty-three thousand seven ninety-one ninety-four. That, so I wanna caution you on using that. Maybe it's something you can use the interest to pay for some of this stuff. Use the interest off from that money rather than depleting it, just throwing that out there.
I mean, here's, here's what, here's how we, we try to manage that risk, okay? Um, number one, okay, that, that'd be one of them. And we could also hire a municipal advisor, so basically investment advisor for, for, you know, for local government. Um, and make money, you know, that would, just hiring a person like that, say, you know, say a college or something like that. Um, would enable us to earn some money on, on, on the bond overall, and the bond amount overall. So, and we could make up that, that difference. The issue is, and so, one, one thing, one question I would ask is. Can we reflect that, those that aren't interest in this amount? Because we haven't added to it, we haven't added that interest to this amount over the years. Um, but that's a separate question, that's something. The other thing is, as you, as you notice, that, you know, we're, we're a little over a million dollars over that base amount. Um, so the twenty-nine. Uh, points, uh, twenty, twenty-nine million six hundred two thousand, that's a little bit over. What we would need, so that's another thing, you know, we can, you know, we can use that to shave off, we maybe use a little less of that building fund. So, um, you know, we'd still use the majority of it under that, that scenario, assuming, but we don't know exactly how much this. You know, estimates we can possibly get at this point in history. So, um. I would say, you know, we've said, the other, the other issue, the bottom line, though, is that we've taxed this money, that money is there, it gets less valuable. So. But as we kick the can down the road, that money becomes less and less valuable due to inflation, and it buys less and less for the building. So, when we started saving that money, that was for the building fund, that's what we used to fix, um, the courtroom, for example, to upgrade the courtroom downstairs. Um, and so this is the major project, this is the major infrastructure project, and you can see, we would still have, now I realize that. I'm just pulling, when I say that estimate, look at that slide now, that estimate slide, that estimated end of year. Uh, from the, what would be left from the applied ones, I realize that that's an estimate, I realize I'm only counting. The, the big projects that we have going on, but that's the main reason that we had to apply that amount of money. Last year's budget was that, that H R project, parking lot, et cetera. So, but this is the max that that, if we get billed all of that. In twenty twenty-four, that three point six million is what we'll pay, and that's what will come out of the applied, it's the seven point nine million that we applied. Okay, to balance this year's budget. So, and most, and a chunk of that, a chunk of that applied funds was from a lot, the previous years of applied funds. Because we couldn't spend it all because we didn't, just didn't get billed on it. So, um, we were able to spend, you know, pay for half of each project in twenty twenty-three, but we still got the other, we, we wiped the paper all of it. We did get to. So that's why we had, some of those funds had to be reapplied. So, I understand some of the applied funds were carried over, so this is, I mean, this is right off the other report. Understanding that the applied funds, that's, we are spending, you know, that's, that's part of the, you know, part of the picture, you know, revenue, so to speak. Um, but it's, you know, revenue from, in the past, you know. Um, that, that we are spending out of that right now, it's a huge budget, so that's true.
So I would add to that as well. We have not been able to add to that building fund in the last two years because we haven't had budget, not money, lo- enough left. To extra over what we can actually keep in our unassigned fund. So we haven't been able to add to that in two years.
But we, but it's been, but we haven't had to take away either, so.
Well, that's what it's for, is to replenish budgets.
But, uh, but, and, so that's why I'm recommending, you know, I, I think it's just best for the tactic, it's what we, it's what, you know. You know, technically, we get, we get told, hey, you got the slush ones, you're just holding back money, why don't you use that? Well, this is the time to use that money. So, and, yes, I'm trying to, I'm trying to manage a bit of risk, trying to build in a bit of contingency in the bottom of, that's true. Okay, so that would, that would hopefully lessen that. But, uh, you know, we need to be, we need to be prepared to, to address the issue. You know, what, and, and different things come up as you construct a, a major piece of infrastructure like this.
Commissioner Waterman?
I, I've heard Mr. Gable and use a numbers man. I do have a couple of questions. Uh, how many, how much money have we spent on surveys on this jail? Twice it's gone down to defeat. Uh, I don't expect an answer on that, but I guessing it's approaching a half a million dollars. Uh, pretty. Four hundred thousand?
I could, yeah, I could, I can, I can, I can give you a very rough estimate, Commissioner Waterman. So this time, if you're talking about the consultancies and all that.
Yeah, from day one.
Okay, so. I can't speak to twenty fourteen because I was not in office. Um, twenty seventeen, we paid, um. It was under fifty. It was under fifty for that because we paid an architect, as a consultant, it was thirty some, thirty some thousand. Um, this time around, we hired. Four different types of consultants, we had our jail analysts, we paid him a little less than five thousand dollars. Um, construction manager, again, five thousand dollars. A ownership, twenty thousand-ish, and then the rest, um, to the architect as consultant. And so that's, that's come up to seventy thousand dollars, so, you know. I guess, a little over a hundred thousand.
There was seventy thousand dollars on this thing, as we budgeted.
Yeah, as we budgeted, yeah.
But that doesn't include the previous. Two times, so we're correct.
I, I can't, like I said, I can't speak to twenty fourteen out of the top of my head, but of the, uh, I can say that, um. For twenty seventeen, it was. Less than fifty thousand dollars, so, you know, so.
My next question, and I, I've heard numbers, 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 and reasons for this and reasons for that. I have not heard an estimate on what it's gonna cost to put the sheriffs.
Oh, okay.
Do you, building in the, let's, in the shell, let's take a look, operation.
Let's take it, I think they have a number on here, don't they?
And I probably missed it, I can't see that screen with, with my eyes.
Okay, so if we look at, um. Um, so the difference would be roughly. Uh, four million-ish.
About four million dollars, something. If we bonded that four million dollars, then that would make this, uh, four on to thirty-third, thirty-three-eight, thirty-three-six.
Something like.
Which doesn't sound as good as twenty-nine, nine, twenty-nine-eight. Cause two ninety-nine always sounds better than three dollars when you're buying something.
Also raises that. Fifty-nine cents higher, too, that Myron was talking about, the concerns for the. But we get, gotta think about the public a little bit.
This was a, an estimated three point nine percent for the bond, is that correct?
For the twenty-year, yeah, something like that.
Twenty-year bond? Brenda, you said you're, we were getting four point three or four point eight or something like that?
Currently, the A P Y was five point one six.
Five point one. That's one point two percent. So why wouldn't we borrow the money? And get our five percent? Well. That would make more sense to borrow the money than it would be to spend what we've got.
Okay, let me give you some of those, and if you wanna think about it.
If I can borrow money more than, for less than what I'm gonna get for my money, that only makes economic sense. The third thing that I've got to bring up is. I looked around town and looked around town, and the only projects that I'm seeing that are being built. Are city and government projects, that's it. Private companies are not investing.
Okay, so here's, I mean, just to answer your question. So if you're looking at the difference between, you know, trying to show on a sheriff's, you know, trying to build the sheriff's space or show it in. Option two is to build the sheriff's space, so, yeah, you know, look like, that's, that would be the difference, you know, three million, it should be the bottom up. So, assuming we apply that of saving funds. So, um, you know, you, you can make. Substitute motion to raise the bond.
I would just like to clarify Commissioner Waterman's comment about private industry, um, you know. I sit on the Watertown Development Company Board of Directors representing this committee, and that's not true. Uh, we do, we, we do have Sentry. Uh, have, have you been out by Terrex lately to see the development that's going in out there?
No, I have not, so.
They could drive out there and take a look. Mm-hmm, you're welcome to clarify.
So this, you know, in case, you know, uh, somebody wants to make a substitute motion, that's, you know, that's the amount there, I mean, if you wanna see the difference.
Well, just a matter of my comment, as it stands now.
So you don't wanna make a substitute motion for it?
Not gonna go, no on this, I think there's other, I think we need more for clarification and more in writing.
I think the time has come, folks. There's obviously opposition to this on this committee, which is fine. Those folks generally are opposed to building a new jail. We know that. When this was proposed back in twenty seventeen, the bond amount would have been eighteen million. We should have done it back then. Now it's, now we're looking at. You know, a higher amount here. Um, significantly higher amount. Let's wait five more years, let's, let's let it go up another ten million dollars. Let's keep pushing the can down the road. The fact of the matter is, we're gonna have to build this facility. The fact of the matter is, is that data shows us that it's needed. And the fact of the matter is, is that if we are involved in a civil lawsuit. Involving our jail, it's gonna cost us a lot more money than we're, we're looking at spending now. We know we have an issue, and if we keep kicking this can down the road, it's gonna become a, a more expensive cost to this county. And, uh, we're, we're gonna end up having problems. Nobody wants to spend the money. I guarantee you that there isn't a county in the state of South Dakota that wants to drop forty million dollars on a new jail. Or can readily do that. Or we're mandated by law to do that. We have to provide that. That structure. Nobody wants to spend the money, we get that. But I think if you were to, to go out and take a survey and, and. I don't know, I'm gonna end it right there, okay? Cause I, cause I don't wanna, I don't wanna open this can of worms, but I think. If you talk to people, most people would say we understand that we need a new jail, we just don't wanna pay for it. Right?
That'd be accurate.
So, that's where I'm at on this, I will support this, and. I'd call the question, let's vote.
Yeah, I, I have another.
He called a question, um. Okay, um. There's a motion on the floor to, uh, approve the language as stated. For the bond to be twenty-nine million six hundred fifty thousand at a twenty-year, um. Bond.
Not to include, does it say there not to include the sheriff's office? No, it doesn't.
No, it, it's renovating, equip, equipping a detention center and sheriff's department. It's all, it's all included in the language for the ballot.
Sure. Just, just because we're talking shell space, it does include, you know, at least a part of that sheriff's department.
Yes.
No, look. Question the part.
The shell space.
Okay. I think we, we're. Need to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so how do we?
You wanna do a roll call?
Maybe do a roll call for me.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
You just go ahead, now, John, I'll hold it here up.
Commissioner Waterman?
No.
Commissioner Gable?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Dusen?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
I'll vote yes.
All right, here we are.
Motion passes three to.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Yeah, thank you for all your work on this. Okay, uh, thank you commissioners for all your input. I know it's a big subject and we'll, we'll get through this. Okay, let's move down to item nine. Uh, no pesticide container recyclable collection is July ninth at the Watertown, uh. I mean, at the Coddington County Wheaton Pest Shop from eight to twelve. Uh. Number ten, uh, we need a motion to approve job description for new position. Or senior administrative specialist in the register of deeds. I think you have that.
Morning.
Good morning. Good morning commissioners, I wasn't sure if you had copies, so I have for you, but if you've got it in front of you, perfect. Um, so. Senior administrative specialist is the job description that you're looking at. This is for the register of deeds office. Um, there is currently an administrative specialist position, so this is a, um. Higher level position, adding some additional duties and responsibilities to that position, primarily being. Um, in the absence of the registered deeds and first deputy, being able to. Be the one appointed to that office and assisting in some of the financial aspects of the register of deeds, monthly reports, those kinda things. Um, so.
Not requiring a new F T E.
Not requiring a new F T E. This will end up being a promotion that you will approve later.
Motion by Gable. Second by Waterman to, uh, approve this job description. Any more questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we need a motion to approve revised twenty twenty-four wage scale, adding register of deeds, senior administrative.
Do you want a copy of this? I'm gonna hand you some paper since I made them anyway.
Okay, motion. Motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable.
This is, uh, basically just placement of that position on the wage scale that you just discussed and approved, uh. Um, at a pay grade thirty-five. Which is where we have some of the additional department senior administrative specialists.
Any more discussion? Questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you commissioners.
Thank you.
No abatements.
Okay, no, number twelve. Uh.
No abatements for that, yeah.
Okay, um, number thirteen.
Okay, so we do have one claim, it is for the May proceedings to the Watertown Public Opinion in the amount of nine hundred sixty-five dollars. And sixty-two cents.
Motion by Gable. Uh, second by Johnson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. A, number fourteen, action to approve automatic budget supplements.
Uh, none of those today. Right.
Fifteen, action to approve personnel changes.
Right, we have a whole pile of those. Um, I'll just pull the two out that are. Kind of separate from, the rest are all step increases as their annual. As they get their reviews done, they are qualified them for the annual step increase. The one that I will pull out is Mary France, and she's the senior administrative specialist, um. The new step will be step ten, grade thirty-five, thirty ninety-nine, or five thousand three ninety-two twenty-six a month. So, changing her job title to the administrative specialist or senior administrative specialist, registered deeds. And then we have a new employee in the director of equalization office. Um, let's see, what was her effective date? And that would be seven one of twenty twenty-four for Mary, um, for this Thomas Polly. His effective date will be seven fifteen twenty twenty-four, and appraiser two in the director's office. His step will be, uh, step two, grade forty, four thousand nine thirteen seventy-six a month, and this is the new hire. Okay, so I don't know how you want me to go through all of these. I guess if I say the name and maybe their new step. How do you, is that what you want me to do? Cause it's a pile, so. Okay, Sarah Ammon, health administrative, uh, tech, public health, her new step is ten. Shawna Carter, correction officer in the jail, new step is step ten. Wyatt Anderson, correction officer in the jail, his new step is two, grade thirty-five. Tristan Coil, correctional officer in the jails, new step, step three. Kelly Alrich, correctional officer in the jail, new step is eight. Maria Eskamalia, uh, corrections sergeant in the jails, her new step is six. Austin Hanson, correctional officer in the jail, his new step is four. Dylan Solberg, correctional officer in the jails, new step is three. Julie Galisat, Galisath, a correctional officer in the jail, new step is four. Kayla Schumacher, correctional officer in the jail, step seven, new step two seven. Wes Jennings, correctional officer in the jail, new step is step eight. Jennifer Matak, correctional officer in the jail, her new step is ten. Connor Anderson, correctional officer in the jail, his new step is two. Sean Nils, correctional sergeant in the jail, his new step is four. Morgan Wormadell, uh, public safety support tech in the jail, her new step is four. Lindsay Strickers, correctional officer in the jail, her new step is ten. Razlin, uh, Tashner is correctional officer in the jail, his new step is four. Charlie Russell, public safety support tech in the jail, his new step is four. Melissa Holquist, correctional officer in the jail, her new step is eight. Keith Dakota, correctional officer in the jail, his new step is four. Brandon Anderson, correctional officer in the jail, his new step is three. Jordan Jensen, correctional officer in the jail, his new step is four. Um, Matt Blackwelder, chief correctional officer in the sheriff's office and correction office, and his new step is six. Brent Solom, chief deputy in the sheriff's office, his new step is six. Aaron Lenzer, public safety tech in the sheriff's office, new step is ten. Megan Swanson, public safety tech in the sheriff's office, new step is four. Vanna Inks, I don't know if I said her name right. Anyway, uh, records administrator in the sheriff's office, new step is six. Brad Howell, sheriff, new step is four. Ann Raskinson, register of deeds, new step six M. Jackie Manning, um, first deputy in the register of deeds, her new step is seven. Joe. Schweitzer, her new, uh, administrative specialist in the register of deeds, her new step is eight. Shawna Constant, director throughout the equalization office, new step is four. Diane Merchant, administrative specialist, director of equalization, new step is ten. Michelle Peterson, database coordinator, director of equalization, step seven. Heidi Seltzer, appraiser two, director of equalization, new step is six. Barbara Martenson, administrative assistant, director of equalization, new step is ten. Melissa Sears, appraiser two, director of equalization, new step is six. Galene Rothenberger, administrative assistant, director of equalization, new step is four. I think that's all. Let's see, we have some that I missed.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen to, uh, approve all these personnel changes. Any other questions?
Except one, there was one, no, never mind.
No, I was gonna say, I missed it. Wouldn't surprise me.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There is travel.
Yeah, there's a couple of them. Uh, director of equalization office staff is going to a conference and the same, uh, treasures office. Uh, staff is going to a conference as well, and you have all that information.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, public notices. Sir. Anything but.
Probably a parade.
Oh, yeah, it could be, uh, Fourth of July parade.
Yeah.
More like a Republican.
Yep, yeah, it is. Okay, uh, number eighteen, is there any old business? Seeing none, is there any new business?
Mr. Chairman, just, um, so we, for, for our budget, since we're talking budget, as you know, budgeting, right now we're starting that. So I've been working on the commissioner's budget, um, just put it together, but if anybody has any facts, please. Let me know, I can, I can send out a draft and then, you know, which you can't comment on, and maybe we can just talk about it next week. Just like over it. So, um, you know, stuff like, you know, our, our, our pay. Uh, you know, if we want to hire a consultant, wage study, stuff like that.
I would add to that. I need your help. Um, a court appointed attorney budget. That is, uh, once we pay our bills this month, we're going to be. Probably only at forty one thousand. We started at six ninety two, eight seventy five. So we're burning through that pretty fast.
Probably if I worked with that.
So, yeah, if I take that amount science two, it's one point three million that we'd almost have to budget next year. Just for that budget. So kind of just want to throw it out there. You guys want to, you know, tell me what you want me to put down in that one because it's. It's anybody's guess.
Yeah, okay.
Just let me know.
I helped with that one last week. I'm also on the clerk committee.
Yeah, we have two that we've submitted, which will help, but we're, we're going to do budget supplements on that budget, I'm pretty sure. Okay.
Okay, thank you, um. Number twenty, it's time for open, uh, public comment. Anybody would like to comment? Seeing none? Uh, is there any commissioner comments?
Hey, you, this is a little continuation of the item that was passed with a three to two majority. Earlier on the jail, uh, to help get the word out, being, we don't have a paper anymore. Of renters of Coddington County, this will also affect you and your rents. Because your landlord is going to be paying more taxes if this passes. Uh, so you will be paying more rent. Uh, take a look at the figures, be informed.
Thank you, Commissioner Rodman. Um, any other commissioner comments? Seeing none, there's a need for, uh, executive session.
Number two.
Number two.
I don't know, Shawna, Shawna have something?
And number one.
Did you have something? Okay, okay.
So there's one and two then.
I move to adjourn to, uh, executive session.
Motion by Johnson, second. Second by Gable. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll go into the executive session.